The Monday, July 1st, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks.
Present.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Dernalawitz.
Present.
Counselor Harder.
Present.
Counselor Heath.
Present.
Counselor Haglen.
Present.
Counselor Mack.
Present.
Counselor Tebow Munoz.
Present.
Counselor Tison.
Present.
Counselor Tyros.
Present.
President Kuzinskius.
Present. Please rise for the sake of opening the piers and the pledge of allegiance. Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us to worthy deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to so guide and inspire us that we may deliberate in unity and harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Open meeting recording notice. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair's, the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? We will begin with the reading of the minutes of prior meetings. There are no minutes, there are no public hearings, communications from the mayor. Item 11323, a vote to authorize the mayor to enter into a community host agreement between the city of Gardner and Bay State Racing LLC. Counselor Dernalawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. As this item relates to item 11317, I would ask for more time.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item 11317, a vote to determine if a track of land located at 827 Green Street be approved as a location of a running horse racing track where race meetings laid out and conducted by licensees under Mass General Law, Chapter 128A, will be held or conducted. Counselor Dernalawitz.
Thank you again, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to schedule an informal meeting for the purpose of a presentation on the proposal and to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalawitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros to schedule an informal meeting for the purpose of a presentation on the proposal and to schedule a public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start off by saying that I was very frustrated at our last meeting. I came prepared, I had questions, I had comments, but I think we all remember what happened, and 10 of us were not allowed to speak on this. Let me be clear. I will vote to have a public hearing, and for three straightforward reasons. First, to make a decision, we need to be more informed and have an opportunity to ask questions. Second, we need the opportunity to hear from the public and have an open discussion. Third, my reading of the Mass General Law is that we cannot vote this petition up or down until we have a public hearing. So for those who support this, as well as those who oppose this, this is the next step we have to take. I also wanted to clear that I am opposed to this as it stands. However, I think it's extremely important that we go through the process properly, to be in compliance with state law, and to give everyone who wants the opportunity to participate and go through all the questions and concerns. I want to add for those who are opposed, do not fall for the misinformation that this item is over should the public hearing vote fail. All that would do is prevent a public hearing. It would not remove the item from consideration, and it would not make a final determination concerning racing on this parcel. Without that vote, this could potentially come up again, and again, and again. Before I go into my questions, I want to clarify a few things. I think some of the misinformation, miscommunication that I've experienced and seen take place over the last two weeks that are directly attributable, at least in part, to the action taken last meeting. Once a matter is before this council, there are additional rules that we must follow by state law that restricts when, where, and how we can publicly discuss matters. There are rules that impact our attendance at other, nonofficial meetings, gatherings, and other instances where this material may be discussed, until such a time that is no longer pending before this council. This is not a city project. This petition before us is because a private company has made a deal with another private company concerning the sale of privately-held land. There is no city money involved in this. Third, this is a standard process. Nothing is being rushed, pushed, or delayed. This is the same process we routinely follow.
Delta.
For the hearing to make the most of that time, I would like to briefly address some of the areas of concern, that things that I expect to go into greater detail during an informal public hearing. First is the special revenue fund. I think we need to explore options to secure the additional revenue that this could come from. For me, this is an important factor weighing on the side of the proposal. The second is traffic. I do not feel that this proposal adequately or thoroughly examines the traffic and parking issues. As a quick example, for those newer to this process, other developments that have often included specific details about traffic mitigation plans, upgrades to existing infrastructure, and other mitigations. Third is the host community agreement. I realize that in our packet, the first draft, but I do think overall inadequate on both compensation for the city and to make sure that all costs borne by the city are covered, and not just by the initial development, and moving forward as well. And the enforcement of the HCA. The HCA outlines a procedure where the city council could take certain steps, including fines, to make this enforcement. I have concerns about this process. One, for example, it's not usual that the city council does this, so we need to deeper examine this topic. And two, the fine for the enforcement mechanism does not seem to be sufficient for the force compliance. Third is the expiration of the HCA. What is the term? Is the HCA automatically transferable? If a new owner or entity took over this property, what would happen?
Counselor, you're approaching your five minutes.
Thank you. Just one final question, Madam President. Water protection. We need to better understand how this project will impact the surface water that this area, as it flows through our city into our city reservoir. I expect that there are state and maybe federal regulations that would come into play here, but I think we need a thorough explanation of how that works, especially what the city would be responsible for going forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Haglen.
Thank you, Madam President, and through you to the members and the public. I'm going to second the frustration with what happened at the last meeting. I had things I had wanted to say, as it's important for the public to hear from us, and we didn't have that opportunity. While I could say a lot more, I'll leave it there for time. So I want to start by reading the statement I had prepared for the last meeting. I support holding an informal meeting and public hearing as is required. This will allow us to formally hear from the public and raise important questions we have, and get more information on all aspects of this proposal. I also want to note that a public hearing is only the next step, and as we, a council, can take as much time as we need after that. There is nothing compelling us to rush this process, and we have no deadline. And we shouldn't rush. There are a lot of aspects to this that the council doesn't usually deal with. We'll need further guidance to be able to properly interpret all the information, applicable laws and regulations, and how all those will be enforced. I have questions and concerns, as I'm sure as more information comes in as it already has, we'll have further questions and concerns. And everyone who comes before this council, every petition we hear, they all deserve a thorough and fair shake. So when I think of the questions and concerns I have, they're as follows, in no particular order. Traffic and parking. I want to see more specifics around their plans to accommodate traffic in whatever form. We need more explanation of how race days will work, and what we can expect that to look like, before we can properly evaluate those impacts and what we should take as steps concerning those. Obviously viability is a great concern. Establishing rules for anticipated revenue, I think it's important that additional revenue over and above the property taxes that could be collected is tightly controlled, to make sure it's handled especially responsibly on our end, backed up by a good plan. The host community agreement, in general, I think we need more information. I also don't think from what we've been given that this is the best offer, and if it is, that it ensures the impacts are mitigated. This should be an important priority, because its thoroughness and completeness will be a great factor in whether or not, should this proceed, provide enough benefit to the city to outweigh any and all potential impacts. And I want to stress the potential impacts as important in weighing the HCA, as those will be pinned by educated guesses. We need to make sure any and all offsets are well and above those impacts, to account for any changes, unexpected or otherwise. And of course, water protection. This should be our top priority in our investigation of this proposal. Where most of us, I don't think, have a lot of experience or expertise on this part specifically, I think it's really important that we seek additional guidance. So I've done some homework specifically on this last part, and looking at 330 CMR 32, my assumption is that these regulations will directly apply to the parcel given its location. I recommend you read these closely. It goes over details around fertilizer, domestic animals, and water supplies, licensing, reporting, testing, et cetera. It's my understanding that the state laws and regulations would be applicable in this case, and they would be enforced by Department of Environmental Protection, the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, and the Department of Conservation and Recreation. So I've requested some information on how this would work in this case, from those three state agencies. I'd like to see a menu of the laws and regulations that would apply here, and if we're going to evaluate this concern, we need to study those CMRs to have an accurate picture. So since our last meeting, I've had some information further on that point. I've heard back from Mdar and DEP, still waiting on a formal reply from DCR. But DEP confirmed that 330 CMR 22 would apply in this case. Furthermore, they recommended that the project proponent meet with Mass DEP for a pre-permitting meeting. To be honest, I'm concerned that this hasn't happened yet, and it makes me more concerned in general about the readiness of the proposal that's been submitted to us. So I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, by adding that we, the council, recommend Bay State Racing seek a pre-permitting meeting with Mass DEP, and that the city be notified and invited to send representation to this meeting, to observe. So I move the motion be amended as follows. I have a copy for you, Madam President. That Counselor Haglen moves the motion be amended by adding the following. One, the city council recommends that Bay State Racing request a pre-permitting meeting with Mass DEP. And two, that the city be notified and invited to send representation to the meeting to observe.
Second.
Motion amended by Counselor Haglen, seconded by Counselor Dernalawitz. Is there discussion on the motion to amend? The motion to amend, again, moves that the original motion be amended as follows. One, the city council recommends that Bay State Racing request a pre-permitting meeting with Mass DEP. And two, that the city be notified and invited to send representation to the meeting to observe. Is there discussion on the amendment? Counselor Mack.
Does the mayor of the motion expect this to occur before any public hearing takes place?
That's a good question. I don't, but I would definitely recommend, and that they certainly do so if they can at their convenience, and then otherwise we'll need that information right after.
I'm just, Madam President, I'm just questioning, because this is amendment as we're in the, we're discussing, the item is to vote for a public hearing. So that's why I'm questioning that. Is this a proper amendment? It should be, is this a contingency for the public hearing? Is this a proper place for this amendment?
This amendment, as, and Counselor, this amendment is added to the motion to schedule a public hearing and an informal meeting. So this is in addition to that. It's not a contingency. It is in addition to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Harder.
Yes, Madam President. I want to start by saying that I used to own horses that were stabled on this property. So I'm very familiar with the property.
Wait, wait, wait. Do we have to vote on the motion first?
Oh, sorry.
Counselor, this discussion is, again, it's on the amendment. It's not on the original motion.
Okay.
We will, we will return to the underlying motion after we vote on the amended motion. So this is discussion on the amendment. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Tyros.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to briefly say I like this amendment, and I'll be supporting it. Looks like the council did his homework, and teacher background probably benefited him here, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Dernalawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to commend Counselor Haglen for all the work he put in so far, and will continue to do so, as he has, I believe he sent another email, awaiting a response from Conservation and Recreation, correct? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on the amended amendment? So it was, the amendment was made by Counselor Haglen and seconded by Counselor Dernalawitz. This vote is on the, again, on the amended motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Please raise your left hand if you voted no. 10 yeses, 1 no. The amendment passes. We will now go back to the underlying motion. Is there further discussion on the underlying motion? Counselor Harder.
Yes. Okay, let me start again. I want to start by saying that I used to own horses that were stabled on this property. So I'm very familiar with the property and with caring for horses. Just so everyone is on the same page, as I have seen a lot of misinformation, tonight's vote is not a final vote. Last meeting, as tonight, all we are being asked to do is hold a public hearing and another public meeting to discuss this in more detail. This is all standard. I really cannot think of any reason not to do this. We should get more information, ask more questions. I hope that for anyone who supports or who opposes this, you wouldn't want the council to accept or dismiss anything that comes before us without doing our homework. Having a public hearing is an important part of this long process. I also want to say it's okay not to know how this process works. It's also okay and easy to find answers, whether you're on the council or in the public, just ask. In the 13 years I have been a counselor, I have heard many petitions come before us for different developments. Some have, I have wound up supporting, others not. But the process is the same. So to everyone, I say, trust the process. I realize that when things like this come up, that generate more interest, especially when it's emotional, it can be difficult to follow. Especially with this item, the process is even longer and has more steps than usual, to make sure we on this council have the time and all the information we need to make this decision. I agree with many of the concerns brought up tonight. I have many of the same questions. I want to thank the people who have reached out. I have had many good conversations about this proposal in the last two weeks, and I expect to have more over the next month. I also want to add that people who have chosen to be rude, aggressive, or make threats, I'm not weighing any of that at all in making my decision. I want to remind everyone, that the 11 of us sitting here, this, on this council, this is not our full-time job. We do not have a staff to help us. So please be patient and keep that in your mind. And remember that even though we have a title, we're just people who live in the community with you. And that will continue to be the case after this vote. So I will be supporting the public hearing.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Heath.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't come here often with a written statement. I usually just speak from the heart. Sometimes correctly, sometimes not. But I actually wrote down something today, emailed it to myself, so I can read it all, all right? So there's been so much drama that I want to be clear and concise. I want to briefly state my frustrations with what happened on this item last meeting. This is my ward, so of course I have concerns. Of course I have questions. I think what was done last time did the rest of us a real disservice. The part that I think was most disrespectful to the rest of us was the objection was made after a statement on the item was made. But before any of us could speak, you guys know what happened. We shouldn't use the rules to take advantage like that. That's just how I feel. Unfortunately, there's a lot of misinformation going around. As an example, the sports betting ordinance that I introduced in the council passed earlier this year, both municipalities and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts were required to make this change based on Supreme Court decision on sports betting. Before we say yes or no to this proposal, we certainly have to get more information and make sure our questions are answered. But I think it's important that this business, like any business looking to come to Gardner, is treated fairly and given a fair process. I believe this council and this community is more than capable of engaging in a mature, mature, reasonable, and rational discussion without personal attacks or rumor spreading. I want to add my chief concern is the residents in my neighborhood, and the impact that this could have on them and on that area of the city. One thing I haven't really seen in the information we have been given so far is, what steps in the proposal are there to lessen those impacts? What those are, and if that is even possible, will weigh heavily on my decision. Specifically concerning traffic, it is obviously already a concern on Route 140, and I have been working with Rep. Slotnick's office in the state to take steps to address that, aside from this proposal. I think we need to be able to ask all these questions, air these concerns, and hear responses on the record. It is the only way we as counselors can properly evaluate this. I'm concerned about traffic. I'm concerned about the drinking water. I'm concerned about the neighborhood. I think we should have a meeting to discuss all of this, and I will be voting to have that meeting. That is all.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Mack.
Thank you, Madam President. Supporting this item for a public hearing doesn't mean that I support the proposed host amendment. These are separate items. Make no mistake, I have grave concerns about this proposal. Many raised by Counselor Tyros, that I will not repeat them over again, but most importantly, the water supply. The purpose of a public hearing is to allow all stakeholders and citizens to speak about an issue that is in front of this council for a vote. This vote is for the city. As much as someone may be opposed to any issue, without allowing the public and all stakeholders an opportunity to speak and be heard, in my opinion, it is wrong, and not how we as a legislative body should conduct business on any issue that affects our citizens and city. It is the only process that allows individuals to speak prior to a vote taken here. Having received many communications from concerned citizens in the past couple of weeks, many expressed a public hearing isn't necessary and asked me to vote against it. I would be remiss not to mention that our responsibility is to hear relevant information from both sides, all opinions, on every issue that come before us. Everyone has a right to be heard. This is the one opportunity to allow any further pertinent factual information be presented, as this is not the time for speculation, untruth, false statements, and conjecture. The voices of the vocal few aren't the only voices that exist. Some of these same voices have been quick criticized not having the ability to speak at our meetings. However, are now against having a public hearing on an important topic that has a significant importance for the future of our city. I, as I'm sure every counselor wants to make an informed decision as to how to vote on the host agreement item before us, and I want to give those people who haven't already had a chance to be involved with the process to be heard. For this reason, I will be supporting the vote to hold a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Brooks.
Thank you, Madam President. Last meeting, citizens felt concerned that city council was being rushed to approve this project. This week, I feel concerned that city council is being rushed to kill the project. Currently, I have not had an opportunity to hear from the proponents of a horse racetrack to make their case. I have received and tried to digest about 200 pages of information included in the packet, but I still have questions, as apparently many of us do. I was unable to attend their presentation at Williams Restaurant last Wednesday because of a prior commitment. I would like there to be a city council meeting to hear their presentation and to get answers. We should also have some discussion about the financial ramifications of this project. How much money is promised? How much of that promise is realistic? What are the fiscal or financial gains to the city of approving this project, or conversely, the fiscal or financial costs of not approving this project? You can tell my background here is financial. I also think that the public, the citizens of this city, should have an opportunity to express their views. Last year, as I was sitting in the audience, many citizens attending city council meetings were frustrated that they could not express their views on proposed zoning changes along Route 140. While public hearings were required on the matter, council agenda items were withdrawn before a public hearing could be held, which negated the need for the public hearing and angered the public. The citizens should be heard. In addition, we counselors have received an overwhelming number of emails asking us to vote no on the proposal. I am curious to know if there are any proponents of this project willing to speak up at a public hearing. In other words, is there any public support for this project? My opinion, let's slow down, follow the statutory process, seek input, do our homework, weigh the pros and cons, and be deliberate in our decision-making. I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Tony.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. First of all, respect my fellow counselors and their professionalism. As far as what happened at the last meeting, I don't have an issue with it. We have the opportunity to do it. If someone wants to object to something, they can object. As far as this proposal, I will not be supporting a public hearing for this. I've heard from the city of Gardner. I feel as though Gardner does not want racing, and the impact that it will have on the people who have built their homes in that particular area, the people who live in that particular area, the water in the watershed. I will not support it moving forward. I've heard enough. I've answered several phone calls. I've listened. I have not had one person come to me and state that they were for racing, or they were for this project. Maybe I'm being short-sighted here. I respect everybody's opinion for wanting more input. I will not support a public, moving forward with racing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there further discussion on the motion? Counselor Craig Cormier.
Yes, thank you to all our fellow counselors. I appreciate all the homework and clarifications that you've all provided. I appreciate Counselor Haglen making that amendment. I think that's very helpful. I think a public hearing is great in most instances. I do believe in that there's not many things we shouldn't be talking about before we vote on them. I do have an issue with trust in this particular proposal. They've been before as before, and the way they approached it the last time is leaving me with a real issue trusting on this proposal that we're going to get the information that we need. So I hope if we do move forward with a public hearing, that we do have answers to all these questions that we need to make a proper vote. But I don't know that I can support this public hearing at this time.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on the motion? Counselor Tebow Munoz.
It's going to be a little long-winded. First of all, I want to apologize to you all for stripping me the opportunity to speak at the last meeting, following the objection that I made. In retrospect, I wish I had found more time over that weekend prior to begin reading the packet. For the last meeting, doing so would have given me more time to reach out to you all and others to discuss the reservations surrounding the proposed track and vote. Unfortunately, I found no other alternative but to object, given the circumstances. I prepared myself with counsel at the final hour to find a way to slow things down, should the process seem rushed. I may have been wrong in my assumptions, but after voicing my concerns during the first vote regarding whether or not to authorize the mayor to enter the host community agreement with Bay State, when the second vote came up regarding whether 827 Green Street should be approved as the location of a horse track, I heard a swift first and a second, and became flustered. I looked around quickly to see if any other counselors were going to speak, but I didn't wait long enough, apparently. I do not gamble. I don't judge people who gamble. I also, like many of you, would like to find alternative ways to bring revenue into the city budget, other than raising taxes. But this is not that alternative. On the day of our last meeting, I spent from 9:00 to 5:30 PM reading the packet, looking for reasons to support Bay State's proposal. Instead, my reservations surrounding the proposed racetrack grew. I found myself particularly triggered by the rendering of the proposed racetrack, which was surrounded by water on all three sides, or three sides of four, located less than one mile upstream from Pearly Brook Reservoir, which feeds Crystal Lake, our primary drinking water supply. After reading through the proposal, I was hoping to see something aside from Attorney Pucetary's letter from the city, opinions, for example, from the Conservation Commission, Conservation Agent regarding potential impact on wetlands and drinking water, police department, potential impact on traffic safety. Instead, I only found Bay State's proposal with their spin, which is the same information that the public would receive only days later. This is a bad deal for the city. Bay State and their investors' interests is solely financial and for their gain, not ours. Simply put, their primary goal is to obtain a gaining license to be able to manage online betting, but at what cost, at whose expense? As you are aware, my primary concern is the proposed- As you are aware, my primary concern is the proposed track's potential long-term impact on our drinking water, the destruction of wetlands, and in turn, the negative impact that this would have on Gardner's future and present residents. In their proposal, Bay State promised a miniscule amount of money annually to Gardner, while they and their investors stand to make tens of millions of dollars annually. What interest and long-term commitment does Bay State and its investors have with and to Gardner, other than using us to meet their end? Perhaps I'm expecting the cart before the horse, but there are far too many unknowns, and there is far too much at risk for me personally to support moving this proposal forward.
Thank you councillor. Further discussion? Councillor Generalawats?
Thank you madam president. I do want to make it clear, as the maker of the original motion, I do have major reservations about this project. As currently constituted, many of the issues have been brought up, but the traffic, the environmental concerns, and the actual economic benefit that the HCA reportedly provides, I think it's lacking. But to change our process and do a different process for this project than we would do for anyone else, I don't think it's a great precedent to set. We need to go through the process outlined by the Mass General Laws, take the steps, be willing to hear both sides at a public hearing where members of the crowd here and others can come, make their case, the proponents can come, make their presentation. I think that's only fair, I think it's our job to be fair. So I will be supporting the motion to have a public hearing and schedule the informal meeting. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, further discussion? Councillor Mack?
For the second and final time, madam president, I just want to repeat what councillor Tyros said, that it's important that we do this process and do it completely, because we've been here before, and I want it done right, because I don't want to be here again next year with another proposal from Bay State Racing in front of us. So I'd like to do this the proper way, so it can be done completely, so we can make a final informed decision and put the matter at rest. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, further discussion? Councillor Thibault Munoz?
Thank you madam president, I just want to say for the record, I am in favor of a public hearing.
Thank you councillor, further discussion? Any further discussion on the motion, amended motion? Immediately prior to the vote and be there no objection, I would like to make a statement. For the viewing public, I've seen a lot said in the last two weeks, so I want to explain a few things. There is nothing unusual, rushed, or unique about this process. Many, many times a year, we receive petitions from businesses or other entities seeking permission to do something in the city. Different licenses, permits, zoning changes, and others. The process is always the same. It gets added to our agenda. In many cases, it is referred to a committee. In many cases, a public hearing is held. We follow the Gardner City Charter, city ordinances, city council rules, and Massachusetts state law. Every process we go through is mandated by those rules, ordinances, and laws, and then we vote. I've seen many claims that this is being rushed, that is not so. I've seen many claims that council is not listening to the public, that is not so. I've seen the claim that the council is not responding to residents, that is not so. I've seen the claim that I am, quote, "pushing this through," and that is not so. I am deviating slightly in making this statement, but I think it is important to do so to correct the rampant misinformation and speculation. Normally, as council president, as most of you know, I would give my opinion at the informal meeting, as the council president does not engage in the floor debate. Again, this is how the process is designed to work. The council receives petitions, councillors debate, the item, excuse me, when they're not prevented from speaking by an objection. We work through the process. This is the best way that has been worked out over many, many years, to make sure the council can get through the city's business, and those appearing before us can get a fair and consistent process. I am not supportive of this proposal. After carefully considering all the information we have been given, nothing has changed my past and initial hesitancy on this project. However, I think we need to hold the public hearing to give everyone the opportunity to have their questions answered, have a discussion, and make sure everyone has the information they need to make an informed and educated vote. That is our responsibility. This is what we should do every time. We definitely should not be dismissing or approving of things without going through that process. We are not holding up our responsibility to the whole public, those opposed to this, and those in support, by rushing to our side and not thoroughly doing our homework. For anyone who votes no to holding this public hearing and informal meeting, I look forward to your suggestions of what you think the process should look like. With that, we'll do a roll call vote on this motion. The city clerk will please call the roll.
Madam president, can you just tell me what the motion is?
Would you like to repeat the motion?
Yes, since I'm first in line, yes.
Since you're first in line councillor. The motion on the floor is as follows. The city council, the motion is for the city council to hold an informal and public hearing on item 11317. And then the motion was amended to add, the city council recommends that Bay State Racing request a pre-permitting meeting with Mass DEP, and two, that the city be notified and invited to send representation to the meeting to observe. Thank you councillor. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councillor Brooks?
Yes.
Councillor Craig Cormier?
No.
Councillor Generalawats?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor Heath?
Yes.
Councillor Heglin?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Councillor Tesone?
No.
Councillor Tyros?
Yes.
President Kuzensis?
Yes.
Nine yes, two noes, the motion passes.
Item 11324, an open meeting law complaint filed by Paul Demeo regarding open meeting law discussion with the city council. Councillor Tyros?
Thank you madam president, I move to authorize the council president to respond on behalf of the council that there was an announcement publicly made during open session of the June 3, 2024 city council meeting, and that there is no open meeting law violation.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Tyros, second by councillor Generalawats, to give the city council president permission to respond on behalf of the council with the council's comments. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no, the motion passes. Item 11325, a communication regarding the legal opinion of the law department's representation of city departments. Councillor Tyros?
Thank you madam president, I move to place the communication on file.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Tyros, second by councillor Generalawats, to place the communication on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councillor Tyros?
Thank you madam president, as the maker of the amendment to the motion that got us this legal opinion from the law department, I would just like to note, you know, it's extremely disappointing that this letter took over a month to return back to us a very simple request, I believe, made to the city solicitor in the law department. I've reviewed the letter, and it's answered some questions and created some more. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no, the motion passes. Reports of standing committees, Finance Committee, item 11289, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Part I, thereof entitled Administrative Legislation. Councillor Generalawats?
The Finance Committee, as it has not finalized their recommendation, would request more time on this item.
If there's no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Item 11314, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Section 90 of Chapter 553, thereof entitled Sewer Rakes. Councillor Generalawats?
I move to send the ordinance to final printing. Second.
Motion made by councillor Generalawats, second by councillor Mack, to send the ordinance to final printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no, the motion passes. Appointments Committee, item 11140, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Schwartz to the position of planning board member for term expiring January 4, 2027. Report from the Appointments Committee, councillor Tyros?
Thank you madam president, the committee met with the mayor's office and the appointee to discuss the reappointment. Mr. Schwartz has been serving in this capacity since 2014. The committee had a very good conversation with the appointee, we thanked him for his service as a former US Army engineer, and also thanked him for his service to his community, being on school committee and various other boards and activities throughout the city. The committee voted in favor, therefore I move to approve, the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Tyros, second by councillor Generalawats, to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no, the motion passes. Item 11141, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Stephen Cormier to the position of planning board member for term expiring January 4, 2027. Report from Appointments Committee, councillor Tyros?
Thank you madam president, the committee met with the mayor's office to discuss this reappointment. Mr. Cormier has been serving in this role since 2007. The committee was very, very appreciative of him taking on this responsibility for the city over multiple decades. He is a former firefighter in the Gardner Fire Department, just to show that his dedication being a Gardnerite. The committee voted in favor of the appointment, therefore I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Tyros, second by councillor Heath, to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no, the motion passes. Item 11255, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Vincent Poussetter to the position of assistant city solicitor for term expiring January 1, 2025. Councillor Tyros?
Thank you madam president, the committee met with the appointee, Attorney Poussetter, and the city solicitor Flick, and the mayor's office to discuss this new appointment. Attorney Poussetter was the city solicitor in Pittsburgh for eight years. He still currently has his law office in Pittsburgh, the city solicitor spoke to that helping us with our somewhat frequent issues of conflict of interest with our law department, though they may still occur, we want to be clear on that. Attorney Poussetter was very fond of the Gardner community, he's enjoyed his time as assistant city solicitor, kind of getting into the work, this is being the solicitor. The committee was very impressed with his work, voted favorably for his reappointment, therefore I move it be certified.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Tyros, second by councillor Generalawats, to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councillor Brooks?
Thank you madam president, I just want to say that I worked with Attorney Poussetter for eight years in Pittsburgh, enjoyed working with him, and I think the city is very fortunate to have somebody with his experience. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no, the motion passes. Item 11315, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Melorie Cornet to the position of zoning board member for term expiring June 12, 2026. Councillor Heglin?
Thank you madam president, the Appointments Committee met on this item an appointee last Thursday, the 27th. We met with the mayor's office, who highly recommends this appointment. Mr. Cornet's already an alternate for the ZBA, understands a lot of the issues that will come before them, and the processes, rules and regulations, and so we voted unanimously in favor of this recommendation, so I move the appointment be confirmed.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Heglin, second by councillor Heath, to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no, the motion passes. Item 11316, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Lori Weida to the position of zoning board member for term expiring June 12, 2027. Councillor Heglin?
Thank you madam president, we also met on this appointment last Thursday, the 27th, with the mayor's office. Ms. Weida also comes highly recommended as a Gardner resident, and also the assessor for the town of Templeton, so she has great municipal experience that she can bring to this role. We unanimously were in favor of this recommendation, and so I move the appointment be confirmed.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Heglin, second by councillor Heath, to confirm the mayor's appointment. And is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no, the motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear in those who have been appointed here this evening. We will reconvene after the swearing is complete and call the meeting back to order.[1436.04] We will reconvene after the swearing is complete and call the meeting back to order. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of a zoning board member according to the law and the best of my abilities. Congratulations. Thank you very much. We need to call back to order. Safety Committee, item 11115, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets. Douglas Road, report from the Safety Committee, Counselor Cormier?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Items 11115 and 11204, the DPW and the Police Department are still working on a 60-day trial on both of these motions to get feedback, therefore I ask for more time on both items.
If there's no objection, the committee will be granted more time on item 11115 and the request is for 11204, correction?
Yes, ma'am.
11204, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Edel Street from Elm Street to Lawrence Street. There's no objection, so the committee will be granted more time. Item 11318, an application by GameStop Incorporated, number 3725, for a license to deal in secondhand articles at 376 Timpani Boulevard. Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. We had a chance to meet on this in the Safety Committee. There is no objection, it's a longstanding business. They are in good standing with the city and the Police Department, and therefore I move to approve the application.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Heath to approve the application. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11319, an application by Gardner Coins and Cards Incorporated for a license to deal in secondhand articles at 18 Parker Street. Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, it's an applicant that's in good standing, a longstanding business in the city, and therefore we were unanimously in favor, and I move the application.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Thibault Munoz to approve the application. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11320, an application by the Salvation Army Family Store and Donation Center for a license to deal in secondhand articles at 8 Union Street. Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, the committee was in unanimous approval, and therefore I move to approve the application.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Hardin to approve the application. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11321, an application by House of Peace and Education Incorporated, doing business as Hopeful Boutique, for a license to deal in secondhand articles at 29 Pleasant Street. Report from the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Cormier?
Again, thank you, Madam President. As the other three applications, these are all longstanding business residents in the city. They are all in good standing, according to the Police Department and the city clerk, and therefore unanimously recommend approval of the application.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Thibault Munoz to approve the application. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Welfare Committee, item 11211, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner to add a new Chapter 15 to be entitled Agricultural Commission. Counselor Mack?
Yes, Madam President. The committee has it meant to review the letters that we received, and we plan to have some interested parties also at our next meeting, which has yet been scheduled. So we request more time.
If there's no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. There is no unfinished business in matters for reconsideration. There is no new business. Counsel comments and remarks? Are there any counsel comments and remarks? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I prepared brief remarks, because I want to address something that deeply troubles me, and I hope it does not become the norm. There were two objections made last meeting that I want to discuss for the public's awareness. The first was the Section 28 objection to the motion to hold a public hearing. This objection is from the city charter, and in the five years I've been on this council, I've only seen that objection used once. For the second, I went back to our records that are available online all the way to 2012, but I could not find a single instance in which a counselor objected to a motion for more time made by the counselor who originally submitted the item and that item being actively in subcommittee. The point is that both of these instances are incredibly rare, and both happened in the same night. The reason I make this point is that I think it's important that we do not get into this habit. The irony is that I mostly agree with both of the makers of the motion, both of the objections on the respective items. But, and this is a big but, process and procedure matters. I didn't always feel that way. I'd been watching city councils for a long time before I decided to run, but sitting here and especially following the example of former Counselor Walsh, process and procedure matters. They matter because it enables all of us to be on equal footing. It ensures that we all have the opportunity to be prepared for the meeting and have our voices heard. It's about mutual respect for the time we each put into preparing for the meeting and mutual respect for each other for all the efforts we put in. No one should ever feel like the rug has been pulled out from under them, or that they didn't understand what was happening, or why. None of us, or the public, should leave a meeting being confused about why anything happened. As an example, I have a printed copy of the Gardner News that covered that meeting. In the article, it reports that there was a motion for more time to study the issue. This is inaccurate, and it shows how confusing this was to residents. It was later corrected in the online version, but I had numerous people contact me on that specific point. We all get passionate about certain items we all feel strongly about, but this cannot cloud our mutual obligation to each other to make sure we can be equally prepared, and there's usually at least two weeks between meetings, and we usually get the agenda full three days before and then some. That's plenty of time to prepare. There's really no reason to fire from the hip. There are also a multitude of better options. You can always move for more time, move to refer it to a subcommittee, move to amend, or move for a further amendment. If you don't know what's happening, you can just ask for a recess. You can make a point of parliamentary procedure or a point of parliamentary inquiry. Just about every rule and procedure we have is to further debate, slow the process down, and have more time. Section 28 objections are so rare that I have actually had to look up the rule for myself, and I think many of us may be unclear on what the rule is. So while I hope we don't come to understand Section 28 out of familiarity, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, because I do think this was an issue about what happened in the last meeting, but I also think it's not our fault for missing this because we were taken by surprise. Section 28 reads as follows. "Any ordinance or resolution may be passed through all the stages of legislation at one section, provided that no member of the council objects thereto. But if any member of the council objects, further action on the measure shall, unless it is an emergency measure as defined in Section 26, be postponed for that meeting." It's obviously too late to do anything about this now, but because this item in question could not be passed through all of the stages of the legislation process at once, I do think the objection was not proper. The point of this section and the reason this has remained on several rounds of our charter changes throughout the decades is that it is the last failsafe. It's in our toolbox, but I strongly feel that it's a tool that we should be used sparingly and never as a first resort. My research indicates that this has been the norm and precedent for many, many years, and to reiterate my point from the beginning is my sincere hope that we keep that council's precedent. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further counsel comments and remarks? Counselor Mack?
Thank you, Madam President. As we are in the midst of what is another matter of development in the city, regardless of the outcome, we as a city must look at ways to bring in revenue to our community in the near future. In order to sustain and grow our services, we have to have financial growth through new industry, businesses, and residential development. We cannot maintain the status quo and afford to keep our current public services in place. Everything costs more, and salaries in many of our municipal positions need to improve. We need to become competitive with our wages. We continue to lose good people because of our low salaries. Gardner can't afford to be anti-business and anti-development and think our taxes will not increase. We cannot have a "not in my backyard" mentality, as there is a lot of land within the city limits privately owned that owners have a right to develop. The city has commissioners, boards, and committees to oversee the processes of development. We need to trust these people and the departments to do their jobs. We need a plan for the future to ensure that we can afford to maintain and fund our public schools, roads, infrastructures, and services, including fire, police, and DPW. We need funds to support our veterans and not tax our senior citizens out of their homes. Everyone needs to become more aware of how the financial impact that any opposition towards projects and progress will directly impact each school child, citizen, city employee, and taxpayer. And remember, you can't have it all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Mack. Further counsel comments and remarks? Counselor Brooks?
Yes, I just want to note that today is July 1, and so I would like to wish my fellow counselors a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further counsel comments and remarks? Any further counsel comments and remarks? I will entertain a motion on the floor to adjourn after the closing prayer. Motion made by Counselor DeSone, seconded by Counselor Tyros. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Almighty Father, who sees over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of joint deliberation and actions witnessed during the course of this meeting. Blessed be thy name, all who are gathered here, and the people who represent us, we are, and do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen. Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.